Yeah, there we go, we're on.
So, we would like to welcome everyone here tonight, it's September tenth. And as you know, we have put out a RFP for legal services. As you know, Reed is retiring and Brandon was given a position as a court commissioner. And so, we find it necessary that we get new legal services. So, we put this out and we're happy to have here with us, this is Matt Wilson and Darren Curtis. And so, this is just a question and answer. According to our RFP, we said that we were going to do this tonight. And then by our next city council meeting, which is next Thursday, the eighteenth, we would like to get one appointed as of that next hired and appointed as a next meeting. So, I thought maybe just turn some time, I think we introduced everyone. Do you want to just introduce yourselves and then just give us maybe a chance to ask some questions?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, I'm Darren Curtis, born and raised in Lee, Utah. I have four kids, three girls and a crazy baby boy. I've been an attorney for about eight years now. Did felony prosecution when I first got out of law school. And Gary Crane called me three years into that and wanted me to come down here. I did an internship with him.
What Gary?
With Gary, my first summer of law school. So, after three years I went to do that and I was with Lee for three years and worked under him. I'm working on a lot of land use stuff with him and dealing with development. I was over in planning commission. So, and then I got poached and went over to South Salt Lake. So, I've been doing all civil work over in South Salt Lake right now.
Who's city attorney in South Salt Lake?
Josh Collins. He's a genius, he's a smart guy.
Uh, Matt Wilson, I born and raised in West Haven. Come from, I guess, a couple of family members were lawyers. My uncle was a lawyer, my dad was a lawyer. I was the only child of eight that he couldn't talk out of going to law school. So, I, I love what I do despite all the, the bad things people say about lawyers. And, you know, there's thousands and thousands of, of jokes. Those are actually facts, there's only two or three jokes about lawyers.
That's good.
But I, I live in Clinton, my family, we just moved out there and built. And I have three boys and work for Roy City full-time, I'm their city attorney. And do a lot of civil work and just enjoy the different municipal stuff. I used to work at Weaver County. I started there as a prosecutor and then moved to the civil division. And then moved back to criminal division and recognized my, the error of my ways and went back to, to civil when I moved to Roy. So, and I've been there, I guess, almost three years now. Yeah, it's been really good.
Three years.
Yeah, I know, it's gone fast, but yeah, but uh.
Can you tell us about Brody Flint?
Yeah, so Brody is, he's also an attorney, he's actually the assistant city manager at Roy. Uh, he would be, if we were unavailable, he would basically be our fill-in. That way, we ensure that any meetings are covered and all that. But Brody is also the Harrisville city attorney and, and does that. I didn't submit a resume for Brody because I don't know that we anticipate him covering much if at all for us. Because we've actually been nice that your meetings are, work out pretty well for our schedules, so.
Good.
Yeah, but Brody's been an attorney a few years longer than me. He actually was at Weaver County as well. And he's the one that talked me into going over to Roy, so, yeah.
So, Reed, do you have anything to add or, you know, you were.
Well, I've worked with Matt for a number of years. I've worked with his father most of his life. In fact, I hired his father in the county attorney's office and he replaced me as the, when I left as county attorney, as the person over the civil work and doing the, the work for the county commission. So, I've known their family very well. The uncle he mentioned was one of my best friends. So, I know the Wilsons very well, they're, they're good folks and meth's just one of that good strain of lawyers.
Oh, I can do it later.
So, our meetings are Thursday nights. We have city council meetings on the first and third Thursdays of the month. And planning commission meetings are on the second Thursday of the month. In the past, we've had usually legal counsel there, sometimes not, you know. Not always necessarily do we, but sometimes it's beneficial though. We found to have, you know, legal counsel there. So, do you have questions?
Yeah, so what is, what do you anticipate the transition being? So, Reed, how much, I mean, because Hooper's kind of a unique place. We've got our little corks, this and that. I'm sure there'll be a little bit of a transition. I don't want to say learning curve because y'all are experienced, but I guess you're willing to help them?
Yeah, I can stay and help as much as, as much as. There are a number of issues pending and I can help work through those if, if it's helpful. And happy to orient these two with the issues that are out there and some of the things going on.
Reed was a mentor for my dad and always had good things to say about him. And I know Reed's, my dad passed away not, not that long ago. And Reed is, yeah, we've known him for a long time and think very highly of him and his family.
So, yeah, it should be a smooth transition, I don't see any lumps there.
So, we've already hired and I, Brandon Miles to be our prosecutor. So, we would just continue that, correct? Because he does the Roy, well, if any of our cases go there here in Hooper, they're actually go through.
Yeah, the criminal is different. Brandon handled the criminal here and they could probably do it if you wanted to. But I don't know that they do that stuff. They've both been prosecutors. So, you could make a choice at some point if, if you want them to do it as well, you could probably put, put that in. But Brandon is a very capable attorney and would do a good job and probably is doing a good job. As I mentioned, the, the justice court's an interesting animal. The legislature's authorized justice courts for any city that wants to have one. If you don't want to have one, then it's taken over by the county. So, it's something that you ought to monitor regularly to see if you're making money or losing money on your justice court. Uh, the justice court revenues, some of them go to the state because they always steal a bunch of everything that comes into cities. Out of what's remaining, half goes to the entity that runs the court. In this case, it's Roy's court and so it goes to Roy. The other half goes to the city that prosecutes. And so, you're getting half of the amount that's left after the state takes their share. And if that's enough to pay your prosecutor, it makes sense to do it and have your own court. If it doesn't, probably doesn't make sense. That's kind of the way I look at it.
How long have we been prosecuting here or had a justice court?
Oh, ten years probably. We've never had a court that was run by the city. It's always been somebody else's court and we've just done the prosecution.
So, would our accountant have that information?
Yeah, they have that.
Okay.
And, and some cities, for example, Plain City does both. They run their own court and have the prosecutors. And that's, that's another option you can take, you can run your own court if you want. Means you've got to hire clerks and so forth to, to do that and pay the judge.
Yeah, and you have no control over the judge really.
True.
The state dictates.
Yeah, it's not like you can say, this is my judge, it just wouldn't want you to do that.
Judge.
And shouldn't ever work. So, anyway, that's, that's kind of how the justice court works. And I don't know that any of you really get involved unless you get the tickets yourself. Uh, it probably goes on behind the door and you don't even know that's happening.
That's cool.
That's true. So, on your, uh, like according to RFP, you do all those duties for a flat fee of twenty-five hundred. So, at what point would, uh, say if we required some extra work or more ordinances? Is that, is that like, say we had two or three ordinances we had to do that month. I mean, is there a, an amount that triggers a larger fee or?
No, no, that's just a flat fee and that's, um, I guess I'm talking wrong, sorry. But we do it that way just so that one, you don't have any hesitation of calling us when there's an issue. Um, and then flat fee is what it is. And so, if it's, if it's so many hours that, that we're putting in and it's, yeah, that's sort of the conversation we can always have later. But there's no cap on it per hour spacing. So, it would, I mean, litigation is one that we want to represent. And unless it's like a, a land use, something that the trust, I believe you guys are with the trust, right? So, the, the trust would handle majority of litigation unless there's not any financial liability, so.
And the trust is, you understand how that is? It's just an insurance company paying a flat fee per year, I presume, or monthly, I don't know how you do it. And then they cover.
Like an insurance policy type thing?
Right, right. And they're pretty picky on some issues as you found out, land issues. So, it's limited representation in those hearings, which I've wondered about. Maybe like around other insurance companies.
Regular training, so you're going to train us on legal things?
Yep, like the Open and Public Meetings Act, you require that annually and then other trainings that are muted.
Sexual harassment's usually one that, does the attorneys do that here or does someone else come in?
Um, Morgan does the Open and Public Meetings Act.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think, I think that, yeah, they've done it, this year we just.
Do I get, they get some of that, you get, you get some of that at your, at your legal city town meetings as well?
I don't think we've ever done sexual harassment training as a council, I think sometimes employees. But I don't know that we've, so there probably are some maybe we could do and should do that we haven't done.
It's more likely with employees, but it's, you folks could do it as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Roy keeps you busy full-time, they have enough going on up there that it's a full-time job?
Yeah, yeah, so we have actually, so there's three attorneys on staff, but only two with attorney in the title. So, I said Brody Flint is the assistant city manager, he's an attorney as well, but we have a prosecutor there as well. He does some of the land use stuff. He's prosecuted for twenty-something years and so he wanted to change and decided to get into some of the civil work. And he's very intimidated by that, but he's getting there, so.
It's hard to get the criminal prosecutors to want to do civil work.
Really?
Criminal prosecution's kind of exciting and fun. Uh, but when you look at it, I've done a lot for many, many years. When you look at it, you have a lot more long-term effect as a civil attorney than you do as a criminal attorney. If you put somebody in jail, they get out and do it again.
Yeah, that's correct. It's a pile that does not stop growing, absolutely.
But it is exciting and fun and a lot of glory to it and so people like to be here.
We create ordinances and they affect thousands of people for years.
Right, well, unless you build things in the city, you build a park, people use that park forever. It's just that you get something you can be proud of, so.
But isn't it interesting the difference between Roy and Hooper and the criminal activity? And your workload there versus what it will ever be here, we hope. You know, it's, it's interesting just the demographics of what goes on there versus here. So, we hope to keep it that way.
Yeah, I, I would love that. I, uh, when, before I left the county, I was prosecuting the child victim crimes. And the majority of them came from Roy. And I mean, they had some excellent detectives, so that was part of it. But, um, and I mean, the county also has, because I know you guys, contract, Hooper's contracted with the county. They have excellent detectives as well, a great unit there. But, yeah, we have, I'd say the majority of the cases I was prosecuting came from Roy. So, but yeah, it's, it's amazing, you know, how close you are, how different it is, so.
Steve Gars, I had worked under him and he always talked about how important it was for cities to prosecute their own crimes. And for that reason, because you kind of are controlling your destiny and you're aware of what's going on. And you're able to kind of put your foot in there, so. I agree that cities should prosecute their crimes.
I think the worst thing we've had in the last couple of years is our noisy, noisy house.
Noisy house?
Fifty-one hundred rooms.
Well, you have a lot of number DUIs and.
Yeah, yeah.
You'd be surprised the number of child abuse cases you have in the city. We looked at that when you had the presentation, you remember on the Children Justice Center?
Yeah.
You have, you just don't know about. And those major crimes will always be prosecuted by the county. Anything that's class A or above is typically done by the county. So, class A and any felon.
So, you're contracted with the county, you don't have a police department?
No.
The HR issues that you guys don't have because of that?
Because of some police department.
That's awesome.
Same with the fire, you're in the fire department.
Oh, really? I mean, wow. Because that's what I was going to say and bring you to the floor, to the tables. I've done a ton of HR stuff with, I was over that in Lee with the fire and police. And we had lots and lots of juice.
Yeah, that's a, that's a bit of break. The county, I, contracting with the county's been helpful with it.
Good.
Uh, they get pretty top-notch detectives that you might not get in a city this size if you had your own police department. They don't get as much patrol as they'd like to, I don't think. But they get their activities covered and, and pretty regular patrol. And they, they're very good about coming to meetings and doing things when you ask them to do it, so.
And, and also if any conflicts did arise between Hooper and Roy, that's where I would step back here and would handle for Hooper. And then I'd, we'd have our assistant city attorney handle for, for Roy. That way I'm not influencing one or something.
And there aren't a lot of issues with Roy. Over the years, we've had a few. I guess we do the senior services with Roy, but that really hasn't been a contest, it's just been a cooperation. We had some annexing back and forth with properties four or five years ago when that was with Roy.
Our crossing guards?
Crossing guards.
And settled through Roy and West Haven.
There were some issues on some of the floodwater stuff, but not a lot. So, I don't see a lot of conflict here. And there is a benefit there too, because Roy's dealing, it is a little different culture. But certainly West Roy is very similar to, to your East Hooper. And so, they're pretty familiar with the type of folks you deal with.
I think one of the things that I've noticed change in Hooper is that has to do with ordinances. And sometimes the council will make a decision and it seems like we're following an ordinance. And there's been more than one time, we're getting more pushback, whether it's from developers or even citizens. Sometimes they just, it just seems like there's more of, you just kind of do what you want type attitude. And, and I know it's not, I think that's just every, kind of everywhere anymore.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's a concern I am starting to see is that I'm not sure we are holding the line as well as we probably ought to. Because as soon as someone decides to break an ordinance, then all of a sudden the city, it seems like it's us. We're the ones that have to back up and let things maybe happen that we thought was crystal clear to begin with. So, how, how do you, how do you feel about that? I mean, I hope our direction from you would be that, I know things can't be crystal clear, but, but they should be. And, and I think when we start off with this, they usually are. And then someone has a little time to think about a decision, talk to people. And then all of a sudden, things become not as clear as it was to begin with.
Well, definitely, I dealt with that a lot in Lee, especially with all the developments going out west. That was a, that has been an interesting ride coming forward, developments going there now. But it was quite the fight. But we took an oath to maintain the law. So, we're, that's the advice we're going to give you is to follow the law and to do that. And we'll be there to, to back you up there. Obviously, the policy decisions, you guys get paid the big bucks for those, um, for making those ones. But we're going to be there and doing the research and making sure that you understand the law and what that line is. Um, and, and that's going to be our advice is to, is to follow that.
That, that being said, to just piggyback with your.
Yeah, I was just going to say, because one, because once you don't do that, I mean, once you, once you let the dam start to leak and you don't fix it, right? If it doesn't, if you don't fix it, it just, it just gets worse. And we're, once someone gets away with some things, then all of a sudden, well, they got away with it, so why, anyway.
We, we struggle because we don't have a code enforcement officer. We contract that out with the county as well. And I think we're struggling with, um, the lack of enforcement from the county.
Right.
To do, enforce our codes and our ordinances that we've passed. And so, we're, we're open for some advice in that realm as well of.
That's what I've been specifically working in, in South Salt Lake. Which South Salt Lake is a crazy beast. And we're dealing with homelessness and just people just living in people's backyards and sleeping bags and. But that has been a big push is code enforcement. In fact, I'm rewriting our, our code enforcement section of the code. To, to give us some more tools to work on there. But that is a huge, that is something that I have a grip on over there, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's on, yeah, I mean, we have other in Roy too. And as you know, I mean, a lot of times your code enforcement officers can be reactive rather than proactive. Just because of time and there's so many issues and. But it, it comes down to a lot of times decisions from the council. So, we had an issue with someone building without permit and which is still an issue. And then setbacks was a big issue. But then, um, he made a petition to the council and the council decided to change the setbacks. To basically consider neighboring, which isn't, obviously not my decision and we advise. But that's, that's the other thing that comes into play is as councils change, which we all know they do. That can throw wrenches in, in different things. But we have our marching orders, like Darren said, you know. We, we do, took that oath and we'll take it very seriously. And it's my livelihood, I'm not going to put that on at liberty or, you know, at issue. Because I'm one that's supporting my family, I want to make sure they're taken care of. So, I'm not going to, one, do something that I think crosses a line ethically to put my opinion over what the council is. And the only time we would really give our opinion strongly is this is unlawful. Otherwise, it's, you know, council.
I think that's clear, those words right there, this is unlawful. I think that's clear.
Right. With code enforcement, a question followed, so the county is dealing with that. So, they have an enforcement, where does the enforcement happen? Does that all happen in the county as well?
No.
No.
After the third, I think, official warning, then it comes into our impact fees. And then we take and we apply fees based off of our schedule.
Okay.
But they kind of help.
Is there like a hearings officer that's in the city or?
So, that's one thing that I was just going to bring up next. So, we've had a hearings officer, but Brandon was doing that for us, but won't because, you know, if someone comes in and wants a variance. So, would one of you be willing then to take on that role as being our hearings officer? Because we would.
Well, for variance, it's not, not code enforcement.
Not for code enforcement, but for the variances. Yes, and back to the code enforcement. So, we have, there's two actually now that we have. So, someone will come in and turn out in a complaint. And so, then they go and usually it's just a warning to begin with. And what they found, we met with them not that long ago, is someone will say your weeds are this tall. Will they mow down them? So, they come and say, you need to mow down your weeds and they do. Will that last till the weeds grow back up?
Right.
And, and then what? So, then they go give them the second warning and we, probably with our fee schedule, like we're reviewing that. We need to make sure that we have enough teeth in the game. That if it continues on for years, which we have one home that has, then, then what is the penalty? Because if some of it is twenty-five dollars, well, the person's thinking, I would just as soon pay the twenty-five dollars and have you come back once a year and then I'll mow my weeds. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's same issue with, I mean, not as many sidewalks out here, but we get a lot of that in the winter time. Shoveling the sidewalk and then at one point it gets warm enough or someone gets sick of it and they shovel it themselves. Yeah, it's, I'm just saying, it's a constant battle with the code enforcement. And it gets difficult because you want to make sure your fees are reasonable and you don't want to just hammer someone. But then you also have those people who are just repeat offenders and don't seem to care no matter what you do.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, Darren does have a lot of expertise with that.
Yeah, I, I have to look at the code and kind of look at different teeth and tools that we have that we could do. And there's certain abiding orders that are useful because those are very extensive. Once the city goes and most, someone's lawn and they see how much that costs. That's, that is quite the slap on the wrist, so.
Our most recent one was, we just passed a sign ordinance about one month ago. And we sent, or Bryce sent out the code enforcement officer to a particular residence to enforce our newly passed ordinance. And the code enforcement officer said, it's freedom of speech, there's nothing I can do about it. And so, we probably need some help with our ordinance to say what is, what is legal, what is not legal? In terms of freedom of speech. Because, or the code enforcement officer needs to be trained appropriately.
And that's, I just bring the question to mind, I'm guessing the code enforcement officer's not calling you when they have questions. They're calling the county. Yeah.
Or her, is it her?
It's a her and now there's a him too, there's a man and.
Is that Iris and Howard?
Iris, uh-huh, yeah.
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 We're not impressed, no.
Is that something that you're wanting to eventually get as your own code in-house?
Yeah, and I don't, yeah, we've talked about that, but we don't know what that expense would be either, so, yeah.
I think Clinton just took that on, they just started a code enforcement program.
But the other way is on variances, like we mentioned that Brandon was the.
Brandon was acting as a hearing officer. I didn't think we quite got that finalized, I believe we moved it back to the officer yet.
Yeah.
Pretty much for, pretty much just for variance requests.
You don't get many of those, maybe one a year?
Yeah.
Shoots a bolt on.
Two this year.
I can watch.
Well.
So, just, if someone is working on that, do you?
I'll pull up the email.
Yeah, we want to be, yeah.
And we, our cities always have ordinances that need to be updated. Some of ours, we're sure haven't been for, well, we know haven't been for a number of years. They probably adopted them from the county, I'm assuming, when we became a city, a lot of them. And some of them do, but that's an ongoing process to get some of them updated, so, yeah. Do you think of any other questions?
I only have one quick one, one maybe unique thing that, and I'm not super experienced in municipal type work. But we do developer agreements for all developments. Do you guys do that in Roy? Not for all, but we do quite a few, I.
You're doing for all of them? And that might be something to do with, there are some new things that, you know, we might not have ordinances surrounding, so we can't handle them case by case. But what do you guys feel like, would you get going to help with, would you have development agreements? I know you're talking about ordinances and things, but.
Yeah.
As we're building out ordinance set, there might be times where, like we have a, we have a commercial project. That'd be the first commercial project that they've probably done. We'd have to, you know, if we wouldn't have any landscaping, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Ordinance is set up, so we'd have to build out a document that's living a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I was actually finalizing one today at Roy that I was working on, development agreement. So, we've, we've been doing a lot more of the, I mean, it, it depends, some cities favor it and some, some don't. And I can't necessarily explain why, but I think they're helpful, um, other than the rezones. Because if you get the rezon, then you're entitled to that forever. The development agreement, you have a lot more teeth and you can also limit your remedies to the land use and development and impact and so. That's generally provisions that I build in.
So, that in Lee, we dealt with them all the time, but they usually work tied to a change of zone and getting the higher density, so. But in South Salt Lake, could we be those two?
Yeah, yeah, so that would be included just, anything that's basically, you know, your in-house council for, for the city. So, any agreements, we do their assistant drafting or reviewing and any of that. And then obviously ordinances is a big, big thing. We both do a lot of ordinance, I think, review and drafting.
Yep.
Or copy because that's, you know. There's certain things, I don't, I don't, Roy has been one of the, I guess, I don't know, this is a proud mark for Roy. But had a lot of massage parlors and massage establishments and.
Leans who?
A lot of those issues.
We tried to push them all to Roy.
You did, so you were successful, that's what Gary felt.
I'm not there in South Salt Lake, no.
Yeah, they're actually, South Salt Lake has cured it. So, there actually is not, even South Salt Lake.
Nice.
They wrote it out of their zoning.
Wow.
Completely, there is no massage parlor. Yeah, absolutely.
It's kind of a major issue actually statewide, but I don't know, the Hoopers.
Haven't had one yet.
They have an application.
Then you know.
We have our own problems, I'm not from here, I don't want these guys.
It's good, it's not perfect. We got things.
What are you telling us now?
Well, I think it's been good for a lot of years, but it's, but things are just changing. Well, I think it's been good for a lot of years, but it's, but things are just changing.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what, I I was telling me last week, you know, I grew up in West Haven and I worked on a dairy farm growing up that was just down the street, it it's one of the ones that's still there, but. Uh, you go there now and it's houses, we used to go on Thanksgiving and we'd go to the local church house and have a turkey shooting, you know, you'd just be shooting houses and. It's all changed and, I mean, I can't complain too much, cause I'm also, I benefited from those changes from who just built recently and so. But again, that's where personal opinion has nothing to do with any policies of Hooper City that's. The benefit or detriment of being elected official, you you do have that influence, suppose we, we don't. Say and I genuinely don't want to say, but. So.
Yeah, but that's what we want you to do is keep us legal, so what we're doing is correct.
And, yeah, I think both of us have no problem jumping in, maybe I don't think too much sometimes, but. I jump in all the time in city council meetings, so.
Well, personally, I'd rather it be too much and then we go back from there, than not be enough and then we're trying to re, then we're trying to correct it. Uh, to me, it's a lot easier. The first way.
Yeah, I agree.
The first round.
So any difficulty you would have coming next Thursday, if everybody's agreeable to that, to offer them the position and then you'd just be starting. Right then and with the help of Reed, that he would.
We have one.
Be helping you allow this.
Just in.
Big shoes to fill, no question.
This is a team.
Yeah, I think it'll go through this whole thing.
The the one thing I also brought up was, so I had a law firm with my dad, it's Wilson and Wilson, that's what you see on there, but. I am gonna be combining with a buddy, so if you do appoint us, it'd be Brody is who I'm combining the firm with, um, the the firm name would change, but. No services would change, obviously, and I, and it wouldn't be. You know, some sneaky way to try and get uh, increased rate or anything, it would just be an amendment to any agreement that you have with the firm, just changing the names of firms and that's, so. Just so you're aware.
Not a good reason why you want to change the name.
Okay.
No, it was.
That that's a good point you're making though, because, you know, having worked with loans, you know, and if if you have one entity. If things get a little hard for them, they change the entity and then change the entity and sometimes you have to drill, what we used to call, okay, we. We need to drill down to where we get to a warm body, because who is really responsible for what you're doing today? And something was built together years ago, and I think the same principle applies here, you know, you just, we we want. A warm body that's responsible, not just a name that could change as we go on down the road, so.
Yeah. And that's why, yeah, you have both of our resumes and, I mean.
Yep.
Yeah, you would, it wouldn't be changing from us and, I mean, I I don't, I don't think there's, maybe maybe Reed will correct me on this, but. I have no intentions of applying for any judgeships or commissioners anytime soon, I enjoy the flexibility of my schedule, I think you lose some of that with that, but. Not to say that I think every lawyer has a little bit of argument that wants to do it, yeah.
No flag bro. That's too hot.
But you you, yeah, we, and that's also why I'm trying to be upfront with the name changes, that's not a surprise, but it's. It's simply because it was firm with my dad and I get emotional sometimes with that, but it's more just. Um, having that assistance and also, you know, there's confidentiality as well with with different clients and being able to discuss those items with. Other attorneys is very helpful and um, don't breach that confidentiality, so.
Good.
Any other questions, concerns, anything?
Oh, thank you so much.
That you would like to ask me?
We're good.
Okay.
And Reed highly recommended you, so that goes a long way.
Well, I actually called Brandon Miles first, because you listed him as a reference, and then I called Mayor Vanderweil and he. Again, said and talked to Reed, and so I felt like that they were good references.
Mayor Vander would highly recommend you as well from West Haven, talked to him last night, so.
Oh. Really, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's like, I wish I had them instead, I'm like.
No, that's a good way to put it.
Okay, well, is everyone agreeable then? Are you all right if they?
Do we have to answer like right now?
No.
No, no.
No, this is a work meeting, you can't really answer right now.
This is a work meeting, you can't make a motion or anything, so, yeah.
Well, I thought that's kind of where you were leading with that.
Just wondered, well, wanted to add any further questions or concerns or anything?
Then maybe we let the two of you go, let the doctor.
Yeah, we're fine with that, thank you.
Thank you. See y'all, thanks.
Thank you.
Did you hear me, yes?
Yeah.
Does the next one have a good one?
Maybe you two do. You want that? Yeah.
We're up. I think these are, I I don't know the one guy, but uh, I know I know Matt and I think he'll do a good job, it sounds like the others had some good experience. Um, the amount that you pay him, I think you need to think about, I don't know whether twenty-five hundred is, yeah, you're not really. Some of the things they thought you were doing, you're not doing, you don't have your own police department, and they do take a lot of care, by the way. Because you have all personnel issues that occur within that department, same thing with fire. Uh, so whether that's a fair amount or not, I guess is kind of something you need to think through.
I would think that police department would make a big difference, because every time an officer does something, they're on, right, every move they make, they're on trial. Every.
A lot of complaints about the police.
Yeah, sure.
And and they have to deal with all those internal complaints, plus they have things that they actually do internally, they're not good and, you know, they're, it it, the more personnel you have, the more personnel issues you have.
HR issues.
Yeah, HR issues.
So, so I understand.
So you don't have any of those, so that's that's an issue, and I I don't know what other cities are paying. Uh, we always did it on an hourly basis, and that meant some months you'd have a higher bill on other months, um. In some respects, it's easier to know what it's gonna be every month, but whether twenty-five is the right amount or two thousand or something else, I don't know how to how to analyze that for you.
So I understand, right, they come as a team, right, that's what we're.
You're hiring their their group, yeah. And with them handling a city next door, you've almost gotta have others there, because there are gonna be issues. And they may not be contested issues, but probably if there's any issue with Roy, you ought to have uh, somebody that's not tied into Roy be the attorney for you. So that, uh, that makes a lot of sense, I think, in the case of this, where they're representing other cities. We were probably undercharging you for many years, so I don't know that you can go back and look at that and get a good guide. I've looked at it the last three months since Brandon left and the bill's been fifteen hundred to two thousand, based on the increased billing rate that we agreed on one hundred and twenty-five. So I don't know whether that's maybe closer to what it ought to be than two twenty-five hundred. How much are you paying for criminal? Is that hourly or is that a?
No, it was a flat fee too, and I can't remember what his was either, I I think his might have been, I hate to say, cause I'm not sure, but it's a flat fee. And he said the same thing, some months maybe he would be more than that, and some months maybe it would be less.
Yeah.
Too.
And the criminal, I I know it's nice to have your own uh, criminal prosecutor, but I don't think you want to lose money on it either. So you gotta look at it as as the thing goes on, and if, I don't have any idea what your fines are and what you're getting in revenue, do you know?
I I have no idea, the only thing I have, and I called, cause I didn't know what it was, the first time I saw a bill that was to another attorney. And I didn't know what it was, so I called him and she said, well, yes, you do know what this is, and that's for them, if someone i- is arrested, then that is for them to have a private, you know.
What they're entitled by, you have to pay for their public attorney, their public attorneys, their public defenders, so that's another expense of running your own court, is you have to pay for the public defender, so.
Yes. Yeah.
You look at at whatever those expenses are compared to whatever your revenue is and decide whether it's worth paying whatever the difference is, so you can say you're prosecuting your own cases.
Yeah.
Did we ask him that question? Were they willing to be our prosecutor as well, or?
We we didn't, we didn't ask them, but we but we did mention it could possibly be them or we could still have.
But they might want to charge you more money to do that too, I don't know.
I, yeah.
I know they're they're not thinking of doing the criminal right now.
Yeah.
And frankly, your criminal is not a heavy duty, by the way, you don't have, uh, I said you do have DUIs, you do have some cases, but you don't have. Nasty things like they do in Roy.
So that is something that we could look at down the road a ways, if it seemed like that was starting to be more necessary, you know, we needed someone to do that or.
Well, the guy we have now charges a flat fee, but we don't give him.
Well, we. Yeah, Brandon Miles, I can't remember, it might have been fifteen hundred, two thousand, I'd I honestly.
If it's that much, it's way too much.
I I don't remember what it was, but but surprisingly.
Yeah, you're, you're, you shouldn't be paying more than about five hundred a month for.
We we do have quite a few, I I've been surprised when we get that bill from that other attorney that we get, there I, there was a, there's a list, I was surprised how many we had.
Oh, well, if you're talking public defender, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm kind of confused at what we're talking about now, what, we have quite a few.
Okay, when you're doing prosecution, you've got two sides, you've got the prosecutor, which works for the city and processes cases. If the person is indigent and doesn't have money, they're entitled to have a public defender and you have to pay for that too, so you have to pay for the other side's attorney as well. Now, that shouldn't happen very often, uh, because on minor cases, it only, you're only entitled to a paid public defender if it's a case you might go to jail on. And you're not gonna go to jail on traffic tickets, so things like DUIs, domestic violence, if they can't afford an attorney, then they're entitled to have a public defender, but you shouldn't have that very often.
We we get a bill every quarter and there's, it it's a page full that we have, cause I was surprised when I called him, thought I didn't realize.
I think I'd study that a little bit then and see what's going on.
Yeah.
They actually list each case individually?
They list each name, yeah, and I can't remember the name of the attorney that we get that from.
So you're talking about a list of what? Of people that need defenders?
Criminal defenders.
What happens is they'll go to court, Roy runs the court, the guy'll come into court, charge with a DUI and say, I have no money for attorney.
Yeah.
So the judge will say, okay, we'll put you a public defender and then you get a bill for it.
And Hooper pays that.
And the prosecutor, so they double bill for something like that.
And, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm assuming for that many, there's probably also the prosecutor on the other side, so if there's that many, right?
Well, you're you're not paying him by the case, though, it sounds like you're paying him a flat amount per month.
Yes, yes, but but that many cases would be the ones that he would be.
Those would be, well, he'll be doing a lot more than that, because most of the cases, they're not gonna have a public defender, they're gonna be traffic cases, and so they don't get an attorney for that, unless they want to hire one.
Yeah.
So the prosecutor will have a lot more cases than the public defenders will. Um, but again, I think it's just a matter of looking at the finances of it and see if it's really worthwhile to have your own court, I don't know whether it is or not.
Yeah, I can't imagine yet that it would be, they have to have our own judge and the whole.
Oh, I, no, I'm not that, I'm saying whether it makes sense even to have a prosecutor, just say, we don't want to do it anymore, let the county do it.
Oh. Oh, mm-hmm, yeah.
Because that's that's always an option.
We've done it for ten years.
Oh, at least then, yeah.
Really?
You've never had your own court?
No.
You've always just had the prosecutor and.
I've got an early justice court.
I really don't, hadn't remembered a list of someone, you know, a list of people that we were paying to defend them.
Yeah.
See, I don't ever.
I'd have to ask Brandon on how often that's happened, I can, I'll ask him and see what he says, I.
We we get a bill every quarter, cause like I say, first time, because um, Morgan didn't know what it was either, and so she had me sign the invoice and I said, what is this? And she said, I don't know, so I called the attorney's office, and I said, what is this we're paying for? Like I say, the secretary acted a little bit sharp with me and said, well, you know. And I said, no, I don't, I'm the new mayor, I'm not aware, and that's when she said, well, it's the public.
So are there names listed, are you, are there names listed on there?
There'll be case names, and you're entitled to negotiate a deal with a public defender and then pay him by the case, so you don't have to take whoever the court gives you.
Yeah.
Uh, you can have a, and I don't know who's been doing it, who you've been paying.
Yeah, I can't remember the name, it it wa- it wasn't an attorney I was familiar, but it comes every quarter, you would have been signing the invoices, cause they come through every quarter.
That's why I say you'd have thought I, something would kind of.
Would click in your mind.
Yeah, I don't remember this list of names of people we were paying to defend them for something we thought.
Yeah.
Well, there shouldn't, shouldn't be a lot of, maybe there's been, maybe you've got a new judge and they're appointing more public defenders.
So if we go with the county, what difference would that be? We pay the county for all these.
If you don't pay the county, they ju- they just have to do it.
We just don't get any money.
You don't get, you don't get it, they get the fines, you don't have.
Well, I guarantee we're going in the hole on this deal, so.
Sounds like it.
I'd say we're going back to the county.
Yeah, I don't know, I I can I can ask Cammy, I don't, I've never looked at Cammy.
I think, I think something's a little different today than it was a few years back, we we would have known about it, we would have.
If you'd have been getting bills years ago, you should have known about it, I would think, somebody should have seen them.
Well, I'm sure it would have been an invoice that you would have signed, because because it was in the invoices to sign.
Somebody had to sign a check, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
But you ought to be able to go back several years and and see what the costs have been.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um.
Cammy's gonna have to give us the numbers, so if we're going in the hole, then we gotta just.
Yeah, yeah, if we're not, yeah, I don't know, I don't know how much you can cover.
So is that something we've reviewed?
I haven't even looked at any of it. I can call Cam and ask her.
Anyway, those are some things to think about, um, and and it's negotiable and and you probably want to have some kind of a contract with them and uh, you may want to look at that. Have them promote something and take a look at it and see if it's, uh, basically what they're doing is agreeing for a set amount to do your work.
Yeah.
Um. Litigation, uh, the the trust has handled, as you know, litigation up until it gets to be a certain cost, and then they say, we won't do it anymore if it's a.
But you know, I I would, I haven't been impressed with that, you know.
Well, no, I don't think any of us are impressed with that. They went through your twenty thousand cap in two months.
And and nothing, and nothing.
Didn't see much out of it, no, so that's that's something also to look at, there are other, I think there's at least two. Insurance companies insure cities, so maybe take a look at the other one to see what's a better deal.
Somewhere I know in this RFP, it said a contract, you know, how long the contract was going to be.
Well, what you might want to do there is is do a year contract and see how it works, and if it doesn't work well, then you can make a change, uh, or you can adjust the price, you know, and all those things are an option.
That's what it says. Yeah. It says that one year professional services, that will automatically renew for three additional years unless notice, if none non-renewal is given, at least sixty days prior in advance.
And you don't even have to do that, you can say one year and then we'll renegotiate.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Again, I I I don't know what the out, the amount is per month, because we always just bill based on time. If you're gonna have them attend meetings, then that's certainly more time than if they're not, if they're gonna attend all the planning commission meetings and all the city council meetings. Uh, that's a fair amount of time every month, if they're not gonna do that, if all they're doing is responding to to Jim, to Malcolm's questions, that's not a lot of time.
No time at all, Malcolm was everything?
Yeah.
I just buried my head in my hand.
Yeah, well, Malcolm's, over time, has has acquired a pretty good ability and he doesn't have to have to have the question answered twice, once he's had it, when it comes up again, he knows the answer.
Yeah.
What we're going for.
So so the longer he's there, the more experience you've got and probably the less you have to ask for help. So maybe it's it's not a bad idea, maybe, to check with other cities of similar size and see what they're paying. And then compare that to what these guys are asking, maybe that's if they're doing a flat rate, if they're doing hourly, that that's another issue. I liked hourly, just because I felt it was a fair way to do it, you pay for what you got. But it's a pain in the ear for the attorney, cause you gotta keep track of it.
Yeah, they're definitely, there's some months they would win, in that scenario, not that it matters, but they're.
Yeah, I I think there there are months where the bill has been five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
Probably what would be a best, better case scenario is maybe to go through the last year and see what the total was and then divide it up by this and see, cause you're right, some months is not hardly any and some months have been more, it all depends on what there is.
Right.
Well, give us something to negotiate with them with.
Yeah, so I I think you've got that issue, I I don't, you don't have a lot of options on attorneys unless you want to go out and look for others, but these are are common guys, I don't see any reason not to use them if you can come to. An agreement on what you're gonna pay them, uh, but I think that is an issue that you ought to look into and and not overpay.
Yeah.
And not underpay either, but it's entitled to be paid.
Yeah. Well, and it'd be good to call other cities of our size.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to find out what they're paying.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's, you don't want to talk to cities that have, like Matt, a full-time attorney, cause that's not comparable to what you need at all.
No.
Plain City obviously just hired a new one.
Plain City just hired somebody to replace Brandon, so you can find out what they came up with. I would guess most of the of the cities like West Haven, I don't know if they have a full-time attorney or not.
They don't, but they pay they pay way over a hundred thousand for her.
Do they?
Well, they have a lot of people.
They pay a hundred thousand?
Over.
Are you kidding me?
Just based on when we used to renew the sheriff's contract, which you, you know, kind of attended that. We we have, our population is like third highest of people and by far the lowest amount of crime. That's why we got, you know, you.
Well, you don't have an urban area. That's you say, you've always got a lot of crime, well, yeah, because they've got a lot of urban areas, you don't have that.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
But.
And and that's an issue always on that on that negotiation of the contract with the county on the law enforcement.
Sure.
The other cities that are larger cities with a lot of downtown problems will want to do it based on population. Well, that's not a fair way to do it. It's a lot better to do it based on.
Combination.
It, well, the fairest in my mind is do it strictly on incidents.
Oh, well, sure.
But you'll never talk the other cities into doing that.
No.
But to do it uh as far as weighted as heavily as you can on responses rather than population is gonna be beneficial for your city always. Maybe that'll change sometime, but I don't know anytime soon. So anyway, those are some things to think about.
I I actually, when I saw the twenty-five hundred, I thought that's thirty thousand a year. I thought seemed a little low for what I was afraid we were going to have to pay somebody. But it would be good to go with Cammy and see what we've, you know, she could figure that out.
Yeah, twenty-five, oh, twenty-five is more than thirty, is it?
Twenty twenty-five hundred times twelve is thirty thousand a year.
Yeah, we'll be thirty, thirty thousand, yeah.
Yeah, which probably, I don't I don't know. It you would know better than I would read, but that I was afraid.
I would guess that would be somewhat close to what you paid us, but that was for criminal as well. If you're paying another two thousand for criminal.
Now we have to get Brandon to get apples to apples, Brandon Miles.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we can check with Cammy and get that.
Well, I've got to take off.
Okay, anyway, those are things to think about. I can't be here next Thursday, so if you're gonna do something.
All right, and you.
So for their work meeting, should we try and get that data? Is it, you know, the cost that we've been paying, talk about it at the work meeting?
Oh, yeah.
I just ask Cammy for it.
Okay, yeah.
We've not got any work meeting that we can decide if you guys want to make a counter or there's some negotiations and then.
Yeah, you can negotiate back and forth and once you come up with a number, then you can put a contract together.
Yeah.
And if you want me to look at the contract, I'd.
Is that all right? Your guys' work meeting, if we look over numbers, then you guys decide if you want to negotiate or not, and then there we can.
Sure. So I asked for attorney costs the last two years and revenue from the test of score.
And you gotta take out of that attorney cost what you paid for your lawsuit, because that's not.
Or do we need her to give us what we're paying for Brandon Miles, right?
Fifteen hundred a month.
Oh, that is not where it is.
I I can't I can't remember for sure what it was. I.
Either way, we just need to.
That seems an awful lot, fifty hundred.
I I can't I can't remember. I honestly don't remember.
I'll ask them to have a check on that.
So we can get it straightened out.
But 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 we also need to know what we're paying that other law firm too, for those, I know there are, I'm.
For the public defender.
For the public, public defender.
But that shouldn't change unless we make a change.
So you need the public defender included, the criminal prosecutor included, but you need excluded what they paid to to honor morning medals for the lawsuit.
Brendan Miles?
Brendan Miles.
And I don't know what the name of the other attorney is. I.
I think it is one attorney. He just handles a number of cases, but I don't know who it is.
Yeah.
Again, though, I I thought I understood your issue, but that attorney's fees, those will not change unless we decide to go with the county. Those those are, those are just, that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
One you pay for the public defender?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because you can negotiate with a different public defender and get a different rate.
But for the sake of comparing them, and Brandon compared to this, that doesn't change from when, you know what I mean?
But that's not gonna change. Correct.
That was happening when you were here anyways.
That's correct.
Yeah. So unless we decided to, you know, like Ryan mentioned, or Ryan mentioned if we got rid of that.
Change it for the county.
I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's a case by case.
It shouldn't really play into the cost.
Well.
So how's the county getting?
It plays into the cost, because if the county does it, you don't pay it.
But how do they?
It'll play into the cost, but it won't play into the comparison between the two, because we're assuming we're doing it either, either.
It pays, it pays the county for our services though.
I don't know.
How do they get paid?
They keep the money.
They keep the money on the fines.
Oh.
Oh, that's all it is, is just a fine, no.
And to your point, you're nervous that we're probably not recouping ours, because we don't have great fines.
They don't have very many fines.
I don't know. I have no idea.
Unless if you have no traffic tickets at the foreright, I don't know.
Yeah, but but we're talking DUIs, like you said.
Yeah, there are fines on traffic tickets and there are try fines on any case we have, DUIs and all the others.
Sounds like we can get a comparison together for your work meeting, so then we can.
So should we just tell what what you, should I tell them then we're going to discuss it at our meeting? And so we won't have a decision on the eighteenth meeting?
If 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 you need to come up with an amount, you're probably not gonna be ready to do that unless you can have another meeting between now and then.
Sounds like we would have the discussion on the eighteenth and we would probably hopefully be able to make a decision by the second meeting. First, whether we put out a renegotiation, they replied before then, or we didn't decide to negotiate on that.
Yeah, if you decide in the work meeting that you want a different approach, then somebody probably one of you two needs to talk to.
Sure.
So even though our RFP said decision and notice of award will be announced at the city council's regular scheduled meeting, does that matter?
Well, that's up. That's up to you. You can do whatever you want.
We can change that, even though that says September eighteen.
Sure.
Well, we'll be. Oh, did they give a date?
It did.
Well, that's all, all that is is you saying what you want to do. If you're not ready to do it, you don't do it.
They gave a date. Okay.
So those are the lines we tell them. We definitely should inform them so they don't, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I think there's a little bit of a delay that needs to be done here.
Mm-hmm.
Get the country.
Mm-hmm.
Well, like I say, I I was really a little worried when I, I don't know other cities, but I knew West Haven and I thought, goodness, you know, we could end up.
Well, West Haven must have a lot going on if they're paying that much for legal fees. That's that's amazing.
But they also are, you know, more than double our fines too.
Is is that, what's her name, Amy? Is that her name? Is she full time?
For a while, Amy was doing other roles too, like she acted as their city planner for six months, which was funny. We dealt with her.
I don't think so.
I'm just doing that for her anyway, so she was doing other roles beyond the attorney work.
She was acted as a city manager also when they.
So obviously, she may have been paid for things other than.
Attorney services, yeah.
But but I was, I was told, because when, you know, we knew we were going to have to do this, they said, yeah, you know, you can't get an attorney for under a hundred thousand a year.
Oh, bloody.
Full-time maybe. We don't need full-time.
Yeah, but I don't I don't think she's full-time.
What's the.
She works other places.
Shifting gears a little bit, so what's the update on fifty-one hundred? Because I know West Haven's over that project. I thought they were gonna start that traffic signal by this year on four thousand and fifty-one. Did, do you have an update on that from those guys?
I don't.
Spring.
Spring?
It's going to be spring, so they're they're starting on the preliminary, because there's still utilities that need to be moved. Ditches that need to be piped, and so they're saying it'll probably be spring. They were hoping by this fall that they could have the sidewalk done, because those kids, there was a walk to school today for Haven Bay and we walked the kids and they're still along the side. That, you know, we had worked in conjunction with West Haven with that.
Right.
But they said that they're not, they won't be doing this traffic signal until they do that, because there's turning lanes that need to be put in in order to have the traffic signal.
Do you have any idea on our timeline for overlay for the roads? I got people asking me all the time. I told them we're like.
When when they will be completed?
Well, fifty-one hundred south specifically. We were supposed to be doing forty-seven hundred west all the way to fifty-five west. Complete overlay on fifty-one south. That was in the schedule and no idea where we're at.
I, you know what, I don't. I know that they put that notice out. I know they were working on forty-six south today from fifty-nine to sixty-three. I I don't know.
We have to follow up with Jared. I mean, I didn't see him all day today.
Yeah.
We get those numbers to you at home.
Okay, hello.
Okay.
I think she probably moved more.
We we were undercharging.
Me and you, I didn't realize you said that, Sherry. We probably just need to make sure we're, you know, really, uh.
I think it sounds fairly reasonable.
We need to make sure we let them know that we won't have a decision made, but and simply, we'll just tell them simply, we just want to make sure we look at our current costs compared to the proposed, like, you know.
If they're holding.
I think so.
Training.
Yeah.
Training.
We should have done that prior when we come on, but we compare them and then we'll either make the decision by that first, when I cover it, or discuss the costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have.
I think it helps us with our code enforcement.
I just think it's a.
Roy and Cam, you have to give us all the.
Yeah. No question.
Right.
If you would ever like her to come to a meeting, she came to one of our staff meetings, her and Alan, and it was really informative.
Who's that?
Iris. Iris and Alan came, and she really gave a lot of explanation on things. But one question I had, you know, you were, and I'm assuming are you, you're talking about the sign, but the ordinance we did was on home businesses.
It was home signs.
There's still a ordinance that it does say neon signs are not prohibited or are prohibited in residential areas in a given district. So it's clearly, you know, I I mean.
Because I know at that time we.
Does every, so can everybody put up a neon sign? I don't mean saying anything bad's been put up. There's been some derogatory things for sure, but um is that what we want? Do we want to turn into a Vegas type thing, like everybody put that up, you know, those kind of stuff?
Well, I think we need to look at our ordinances, because I thought that, because you remember when we were talking about that at the meeting, someone and actually asked that comment, is this about all signs? And I think it was maybe Debbie, and we said, no, we're, this is home businesses.
It was.
So we probably need to also look at our ordinance that has to do with any sign, because that one we were doing was specifically a home business, because we.
Is it business of home signs?
There was, um, I know it was for a business, but we do have an ordinance about electronic signs in residence.
It it was, yeah.
Neon. Which makes sense.
Elec- in residential neighborhoods, because I know some people live back there that it kind of irritates them at night, even though the message might be good, you know?
It's the fact that there's lights on all the time.
Yeah.
Flexing.[1651.91]